I'll call to order the Ferguson Township Board of Supervisors' regular meeting for Tuesday, September 5th if we could all rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with the redeemed and justice for all.
And now we'll go to the manager for announcements and Zoom instructions and a roll call.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you to members of the board, staff, and the public for joining us this evening on this September 5th regular meeting of the Board of Supervisors. This meeting has been properly advertised in accordance with the Pennsylvania Sunshine Act as a hybrid meeting with the option to attend virtually using the Zoom platform. If you are in attendance virtually using the Zoom platform and wish to speak on behalf of an agenda item, please say your name, municipality of residence, and the topic you wish to speak on when the chairwoman calls on you. If you are attending here with us in person here in the main meeting room and wish to speak on behalf of an agenda item, please address the board at the podium and state your name, municipality of residence, and the topic you wish to speak on. Prior to commencing the meeting, I have just a few short procedural items to cover. First, members of the public attending using the Zoom platform are asked to remain muted during the meeting to prevent any ambient noise from disrupting the meeting. If a member of the public is acknowledged by the chair, they may unmute their microphone for their question or comment. Secondly, board members are asked to indicate their name when motioning or seconding a motion so that minutes may accurately reflect the action taken. Finally, a rule call of the Board of Supervisors will now be taken to ensure that everyone can hear and interact using the Zoom platform. Please indicate that you are here when your name is called. Ms. Strickland?
Here.
Ms. Stevens?
Here.
Mr. Thompson?
Here.
Mr. Gracie Griffin? Mr. Heller?
Here.
Thank you. Madam Chair, you have the quorum.
Thank you, and also announce that we had an executive session today, September 5th, on personnel. And up next is public input, an opportunity for anyone to comment on items not on tonight's agenda. And seeing none, we'll move on to approval of the minutes. There's two sets of minutes, the August 12th joint meeting with the Planning Commission and the August 15th regular meeting minutes. Were there any changes or corrections to those?
I just, in the regular meeting minutes, I wanted to add, there was a comment from a community member, and it just said, "Mr. Rob," question mark.
I saw it, yeah.
His last name is V E N E M A, Venema.
Rob Venema.
So, just if we want to add that to the record.
Very good, okay. So with that change, is there a motion to approve?
So moved. This is Patty.
One second.
Second, ma'am. Mr. Thompson.
All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed, say no. Okay, thank you. Next up is Authorities, Boards, and Commission Reports with the University Area Joint Authority Report from Mr. Kumpel.
Good evening, and thank you for the opportunity to report on the University Area Joint Authority. Wes Gleeb and I represent the township on that authority board of directors. The Board of Supervisors received in their packet a report from myself and Wes, so I'm just going to highlight just a couple of the topics there. In the township here, the Scott Road Pump Station has been completed, generator's in place. This should help substantially with flows to the pump station as well as be able to take the additional flow from new development that's occurring on the Horner Farm. I want to highlight the anaerobic digester and sludge dryer. This will, once this project is completed, that'll be the end of composting. As we know, at the UAJ Authority, we'll be able to accept additional flows of sludge from both Belfont and Tyrone, and we're working diligently with the Center County Recycling and Refuge Authority with regard to their organics, which we'll be able to take also. This facility will also be able to take foods, food goods that have expired, et cetera, and so we'll be able to contract with very large warehouses, et cetera, that are getting rid of food that are either ineligible, edible, or have expired and will need to be processed. So, this project is a huge project for the region. The project is out for bid through Penn Bid, and we expect to open bids sometime mid-month. We're currently in a rate dispute, as you know, with the State College Borough. UAJ has filed a complaint in the Court of Common Pleas, asking for the court to declare the State College Borough's withholding of partial payments unlawful under the Municipal Authorities Act. The way that customers are to make a file of complaint is through the court. The Borough has chosen to withhold payments, and we're currently awaiting payments of approximately $1.2 million. This is having a pretty significant impact on our budget. We did a rate increase this past year, went from $104 to $108 a quarter. It appears that all ratepayers are going to see an additional rate increase in 2024 due to these funds not being paid in a timely manner. We're working on the 2024 budget right now. One of the things that the Authority Board members have asked for is a more detailed budget from UAJ staff in addition to the line item budget that is typical, to provide additional transparency of how revenues are arrived at and how expenditures are made. Finally, we've had a number of projects over the past couple of years here. This year alone, we're looking at a net benefit of projects over the next 25 years of $25.2 million in savings to the ratepayers. So, some of these projects, although costly, are going to show a net reduction in operating costs for the plant. So with that, I'll conclude. If you have any other questions or any questions, I'll be glad to try to answer them.
Thanks so much. Questions for Mark on this report?
When do you anticipate getting a resolution or some sort of action for the State College Borough?
We're currently in discovery stage right now, where documents are going back and forth between the Authority and the Borough. The court has not set a court date yet.
All right, well, thanks so much. Thanks for the written report, too. They had a lot of good information in it, and that's now on the agenda.
Thank you.
Okay, up next, special reports and acknowledgements. This month, under Diversity, Equity, and Inclusionary Initiatives and Acknowledgements, we have Suicide Prevention Month, Hispanic Heritage Month, which is observed September 15th through October 15th. Rosh Hashanah is September 15th through 17th, and Yom Kippur is September 25th through 24th through 25th. Moving on to COG and Regional Committee Reports, the Executive Committee is first up. We met, the agenda is attached, and we've had the general forum since then, so we've pretty much covered everything that we discussed at Executive Committee. If there's any questions, I'm happy to elaborate on anything. And if not, we'll go to Parks and Recreation Governance Committee with Patty.
Thank you. Not much to report there. It's sort of a slow-moving, I will say it is progress at least. We're trying to get to the point where we identify what the perceived problem is about the duplicative nature of some of the COG committees and what the Authority does, and just trying to actually nail down a problem statement. So we're still hashing that out, and a mediator continues to lead us in that. And so, once we get maybe a problem statement down, then I can come back and we can maybe have a more public discussion about, you know, what we sort of see from our perspective as a township, that it's CRPR and, no, the Authority, excuse me, the Authority and whether we have a need for like a Parks Capital Committee, or is that sort of creeping into the mission of each other? So, anyway, we're still working on a problem statement, and I will keep you posted.
Thanks. When do you meet again? Is that monthly?
Yes.
That you all meet? Okay.
Yes, I think it's the second Wednesday of the month.
Okay, thank you. And I see Cory has joined us. I just want to make sure that you can hear us, Cory, and we can hear you.
Yep, I can hear you fine.
Great, thank you. Okay, questions for Patty on governance? Okay, then moving on to other committee reports, we have the Spring Creek Watershed Commission Report with Mr. Heaven Abbey.
Good evening. Earlier, in preparation for the meeting, I submitted a written report from the July 19th meeting of the Spring Creek Watershed Commission. Significant in that was the adoption by the Commission of an annual budget that we'll talk about a little bit later, I think on the agenda, and also reflecting just a few administrative housekeeping matters with the Commission. It meets the third Wednesday of odd-numbered months, and that's purposeful so that it doesn't conflict with any of the dozen members of the Commission. So, I point out that just, we're preparing now and getting ready for our September 20th meeting, which will be the third Wednesday. Any questions about the budget? We can talk about later, I guess, or anything from the written report. Madam Chair.
Thank you so much. Questions for Mr. Abbey, and we do have another agenda item on Spring Creek Watershed later on this evening, so. No, all right, well, thank you so much.
Yep.
Okay, up next is the Manager's Report. Anything you'd like to highlight from that?
No, I'm happy to answer any questions that the board may have, provided with the agenda as a copy of my Manager's Report.
Questions for the manager? Thank you for that. And we have the Planning and Zoning Report from Director of Planning and Zoning. Can't see Ms. Wargo is on there. Okay, if there's anything that you wanted to highlight from that?
I have my reports included in the agenda, and I'm happy to answer any questions the board may have.
Thanks very much. Questions for Planning and Zoning? Not seeing any. All right, well, thank you so much for your report included in the agenda. Then we'll move on to unfinished business, and the only item under unfinished business is the review of the draft Terrace Streetscape District Ordinance Amendments and zoning map. We'll go back to Ms. Wargo for that.
This is Rhonda. Did we lose sound?
Oh, Rhonda, can you not hear us?
I can hear you, Rhonda.
We can hear each other, and they cannot hear us.
I don't think they can.
They can't hear us?
Or video.
Well, we can hear you. We can hear you. Maybe if somebody wants to let Cory know.
Texting Christina.
Hear them. Okay. Just a minute to resolve this. Not sure why those things change sporadically sometimes. I was going to say you could switch chairs right now while we have a brief pause.
No, I already did.
Oh, did you? Okay.
This is Rhonda. I can hear you and see you. Thank you.
Okay, great. Thanks for your patience, everyone, and we'll go back to Jenna for this item. Jenna, we're on the.
Can everyone hear and see me?
Yes, we can hear you and see you. Can you hear us? Can you hear us, Jenna?
I can see you, Jenna. I don't think they can.
Yeah, Rhonda and I can talk to one another.
Is it maybe just Jenna specifically?
Rhonda, can you hear us?
Yes, I can.
Okay, Rhonda can hear us. Jenna, can you hear us now?
Rightly.
Oh, okay. Jenna, we can hear you, so you can just barely hear us? Is that it?
Yeah.
Okay. James, one more minute here. There's nothing on our end that we can identify as a problem. Okay, we'll speak up, Jenna, if you can hear us, but we had moved on to the review of the draft Terrace Streetscape District Ordinance Amendments and zoning map. And we're handing it over to you for the narrative.
All right, perfect. Provided with the agenda are the draft ordinance amendments to Chapter 22 Subdivision Land Development, Part 5A Design Standards for Development in Terrace Streetscape District, and Chapter 27 Zoning, Part 304 Terrace Streetscape. Based on the feedback received during the Joint Board of Supervisors and Planning Commission meetings held on June 14th and August 14th, Mac and Engineers and Consultants are here to provide recommendations on the proposed draft amendments, text, and the proposed map for the board's consideration based on the public input and feedback we have received to date. So, I believe we have Brandy in the audience, as well as Christina, and James has the presentation, so I will kick it over to them.
Great, thanks. Brandy, if you wanted to get over to the podium. Thank you.
Okay, so, thank you, everyone. As you know, we've been talking about this for quite some time, so we've, as Jenna mentioned, we've had numerous public outreach events, meetings, focus groups, a charrette, surveys. We've met with, or met with a joint meeting with the Board of Supervisors and Planning Commission. We had two of those recently, as Jenna mentioned. So we've taken all of that information, and we've drafted some recommendations at this point. However, I understand there might be some additional conversations needed around some of the recommendations, so what you're seeing here is just a culmination of what we've heard, because there wasn't 100% consensus really on many of the items that we discussed. So, we took into account what we were hearing, you know, our professional experience, talks with staff, and so what you're seeing here tonight is a culmination of that. Again, these are draft recommendations, so if the board needs additional time or needs additional discussion regarding any of these items, that is fine, and we can take that after the meeting tonight.
Okay. All right.
So, we'll just start through the presentation. You know who the project team is by now, so we can go on from there. Next slide, please. So, we did talk about renaming the Terrace Streetscape District. There were a couple of different options that have been thrown around and discussed. Again, not 100% consensus on what the name should be. The recommendation that we have here tonight is Mixed Use Corridor. Again, this is something that we, really is up to the township, what you would like to name the district. Just of all the feedback we've heard, having mixed use and corridor in the name seemed to be important, so that's the recommendation at this point.
Next slide.
Oh, it's not showing what's on yours. There it is. Okay, so for the boundary, this was one of the bigger items of discussion. Again, not 100% consensus in regard to keeping the boundary as is, expanding the boundary, or reducing the boundary in terms of especially board and planning commission input that we received recently. So, the recommendation that we're presenting here tonight is to keep the existing boundary with the additional residential block on the eastern side of the district, north of Harley Avenue, east of Butt Street. You can see it there in the red outline. And then the remainder of the district, that's the existing boundary currently. So, we weren't recommending the full expansion or the full reduction that we've talked about. This seemed to be a compromise, but again, we understand that additional discussion may be needed regarding the boundary. Building height, another main point of discussion, especially in the recent meetings that we've been having. So, for our recommendation tonight, buildings fronting West College, a maximum height of 45 feet with the 10-foot incentive for providing workforce housing as defined and regulated in your ordinance. So there would be regulations in terms of what constitutes workforce housing and how that would have to be incorporated into the development. Buildings on other streets other than West College, maximum building height of 40 feet, as well as parking garages. And this was done to match existing or surrounding districts. Your R2 district allows for a maximum of 40 feet, so that's why we recommended the 40 feet here. Uses, the additions that we've discussed for the permitted principal uses, adding veterinary clinic, private recreation, and single-family dwellings on streets other than West College Avenue. Permitted uses, accessory uses, we recommend adding home-based business, no-impact. That is actually a requirement of the state code, that those types of uses need to be allowed in every residential district. Conditional uses, principal adding hotel to conditional uses. The threshold for applying the design guidelines that are in your Chapter 22 that Jenna discussed, the recommendation is that those would be applied for all new construction, renovations of 50% or higher, and expansions of 10% or higher. Some additional updates that we've talked about in the past, we really didn't discuss in great length at our recent meetings, because there did seem to be consensus around these items, but I just wanted to remind everyone, we were recommending removing the differences between lots greater than .4 acres and less than .4 acres, so the regulations would be for all lot sizes, so there wouldn't be that .4 acre differentiation in terms of what uses are allowed and some other dimensional requirements. The minimum lot size, recommending 4,500 square feet. Maximum building size, 2,000, sorry, 20,000 square feet. Front yard setbacks on West College Avenue, we're recommending that those be variable, meaning that there's no minimum. They can build up to the sidewalk, or they can go back as far as 20 feet. If they choose that option, there are requirements in the design guidelines in regard to, they need to provide benches, planters, street furniture, that kind of thing, in that front yard. So those are the main recommendations at this point, so we'd be happy to entertain questions. Again, I understand that there might be some additional discussion regarding some of these items needed outside of this meeting.
Thanks so much for this presentation and for your attendance in meetings and your participation with us. It's been so helpful. Any questions for right now while Brandy's up at the podium? Because then we can kind of get into discussion, let her sit down until we know her to come back up. So we had identified here in the agenda a few points of probable discussion for the board to tackle, some of the bigger changes in here that we looked at at the joint meeting, just to kind of firm up where the board is at. Those were the design guidelines that were just mentioned, and at what percentage do the renovation or expansion, do those kick in? Maximum building heights, the district boundary, the name of the district, I thought we could go through those, and then any other items that anyone has picked up after seeing those redlined copies. Thank you for those. That was so helpful to see that in the agenda for both the salado and zoning ordinance. And then, and we can take public comment as we move through, so that it's relevant to whatever topic we're on. So, with that, we can start with the design guidelines. That was kind of a longer discussion when we had our joint meeting with the Planning Commission. And I don't know if it's possible to go back up to that.
The threshold?
Yeah. Mrs. Design Guidelines, so it might be.
Since after this, after this.
There we go. Okay, I think where I remember we kind of landed was at 50% or higher would kick in the design guidelines for renovations and expansion. Obviously, new construction has to adhere to all of it. So, we can talk about if we want that to apply to both renovations and expansion. There's a little, that gets a little more nuanced, it's a little bit harder to, for maybe somebody coming in to make some adjustments to know what they're actually going to be required to do, so I think it'd be helpful to just take a minute to decide if we want to look at just expansions, just renovations, both. expansions, just renovations, both, and then the percentage.
I'm going to either way.
Okay.
I think I'm getting tripped up on the expansion part of it, so.
Is there a question that we could, or answer that we could offer if you have a question?
No, no, no.
Maybe if you just want to provide what is in the ordinance as far as the definitions of both of those, just to give us a better picture.
So, we modeled the requirements from your existing, when a land development kicks in through your saldo. We talked about that a little bit at our last meeting. So, for building expansion, currently what is in the draft is that the design guidelines would kick in if the building coverage is increased by more than 10%. The impervious coverage is increased more than 10%. If the expansion is increasing parking requirements, or if stormwater management controls are changing, those kind of are, you know, that's kind of like the basis for when these would kick in for building expansions. And then, it's the exact same for alterations. It's just the percentage is raised up to 50%. So, if the building coverage is increased more than 50%, or the impervious coverage is increased more than 50%, then the design guidelines would kick in. And we had discussions with staff because we did talk about it our last joint meeting, about 50% for both. So, in further discussions with staff, we thought we might want to lower the building expansions to 10% just because an alteration is more minor, whereas if they're expanding the building, you might want those design guidelines to kick in at an earlier point because they are altering more of the property.
Okay, and we had had that before the last joint meeting. They were both at 10%.
Correct.
Right? Okay, okay. And then we just.
And so, we bumped up the alteration because alterations by nature are less impactful than an expansion.
Right.
So, that was kind of the reasoning and kind of the middle ground that we landed on in further discussions after our last joint meeting.
Okay. I'm comfortable with this. I think this.
I am too.
Corey, I can't see you because we have the presentation up on the screen, but if you just want to say if you have any comments on this, or if you're good with this change.
I'm fine with this change.
I think someone else is fine with it as well.
Okay, there's consensus on that one. Okay, great.
From all ages.
Yes, everyone likes that one. Fantastic. Okay, so, we'll go to building heights. Again, another long discussion on this.
Yes.
And I went back and reviewed the minutes too, just to make sure I had a really solid memory of where we were all talking. And we did, I think there was generally agreement around the 35 feet. There was some flexibility up to maybe 45. There is a lot of conversation around 50 feet being just a total change in construction type and what use that would bring. And so, I think, you know, I'm comfortable at 35. I think we can talk about the incentives separately from this. For a minute, or in a minute. So, I think if we just talk about the 35 to 45, or, you know, just to make sure my recollection is the same as everybody else's.
And for me, it would be the 35 that I'd be looking for, but I'd also maybe want to expand that out to the building on other streets and parking garages, limiting those to 35 feet. Because I would have a concern that a taller building could go in a small neighborhood as opposed to on College Avenue.
And just keep in mind too, that your R2 district, which is adjacent to TSD, the maximum building height currently in that district is 40 feet. So, that's why we were recommending the 40 feet to be consistent because you do allow that in a primarily neighborhood district right next door. So, limiting the TSD to 35 feet, when you allow 40 feet in a residential district adjacent, could limit your development potential and what developers could financially build and make sense to them, especially when you're allowing buildings higher in a residential district bordering the TSD. So, keep that in mind in your discussion.
Thank you for that. And I was going to say, maybe we can bring up the zoning map too, so we can see where the R2 falls. Because I think there is a distinction. Jeremy and I are both bringing it up on our computers, so I think it'd be helpful to have it up here too. Because there is a distinction also with properties on West College Avenue versus not having a frontage on West College Avenue. So, in both the existing and in the new.
Yes.
Ordinance. So, we can take those separately as well if we want to address those separately. So, Ben, just to talk about that 10-foot incentive, you know, there, my concern about the incentives for height, and I know we'll talk about some later with some green building items, is the interpretation, the use of it, you know, there've been issues. And so, there is already a requirement for workforce housing to be built. So, this would be an incentive to add additional. If you have 10 units built, you're required to build the workforce housing. And so, I think, you know, I'm not in favor of having a height incentive for this, maybe something else. Where we're looking at the green building incentives, we're talking about increased impervious coverage, so maybe that would be a conversation, but I'm very, very hesitant to have, and I would not be in favor of the 45 foot with the 10-foot incentive. So, we'd be talking about maybe a 35 foot to 45 foot.
I'm going to look at the additional 10 feet that is permitted in the zoning district as an incentive. You are correct. The developers, they are doing more than 10 residential units. They are required by a separate ordinance to build workforce, and if they choose to build them, they get the same amount of market rate units. So, these are really separate ordinances. This is more just permitting those market rate units for the workforce units that they are required to build. Because at the end of the day, what we have seen in the state of Pennsylvania is if you have more sticks than carrots in workforce housing or inclusionary housing ordinances, they don't hold up in court. So, we can't continue to say to the private development community, you need to build them, or we're not giving you anything to do it, type of situation. So, that's why we, especially in the ordinance amendment, we looked at in August for workforce. We are providing more carrots. We're giving developers more options. It's a way for us to be a little bit easier to work with the requirement that we have already. So, the board, absolutely, you can say, nope, we're done at 45 feet. Cannot go higher even for the market rate units that they get for workforce. It just plays into the developers pro forma, and they would have to decide if that's a good option for them.
Thanks so much. Yeah, and that's kind of where I'm at. So, I think, you know, I think that does explain some of the challenges we have, and we have our, you know, separate workforce housing ordinance. I do have a question about that, but we can get to that later on. But I want to open it up and get some feedback from everybody else. Again, Corey, just go ahead and speak up, whenever you want to chime in.
Sure, I'll go now.
Sure, thank you.
I'm okay with the 10-foot incentives, and I think I agree with Jenna that, you know, all sticks and no carrots is going to get developers to do things. And yet, they have to make a pencil, and giving them the extra story, I think is something that we can do, particularly, you know, if the surrounding zoning allows for 40 feet, going up to 55, I don't know, that's not a huge, a huge increase.
Thanks, Matt.
Yeah, I would still echo what I said earlier. I'm a fan of the 35 limit, and I could see potentially the extra 10-foot incentive on top of that being applied, but I wouldn't go above 45 as the standard height. I do have a communication here from a resident also noting, of course, their concern with the height of the buildings as well as the expansion that we'll get to, including those extra streets there. I've also, I'll share this as well, apropos, New York Times had a great article, I think it was yesterday, on essentially the downstairs, the ground level of businesses just not being there anymore. And I know we're seeing some of that in State College. So, I do have concerns too that mixed-use, it can work, but we have to be very planful on how it can work and what businesses do go into those locations, the size of those businesses. So, I encourage everybody, in fact, the name of the article for those that are interested is "The Ground Floor Window Into What's Ailing Downtowns." So, again, just encourage folks to read that because it was rather interesting, especially as we're seeing impacts of stuff like this in State College.
Yeah, and that's a very good point. And to that point, through our discussions here, which wasn't in the slides, but the requirement for first-floor retail is no longer, it's no longer retail, it's non-residential, so it can be other types of uses because we are seeing a decline in the retail, and requiring that can actually hurt a downtown because you can't get people to always provide viable retail spaces anymore. So, we are addressing that as well. So, that's a very good point.
Thank you. Thanks. Jeremy and Patty? Go ahead, Jeremy.
I'm more in favor of the 35, keeping it low. That seems to be the overwhelming ask from our residents right now. I do like the idea of not necessarily thinking of maybe the ground floor is retail space. I think everyone here, or at least a good amount of people, could agree that they like being able to maybe go see their doctor within walking or short driving distance, or even maybe their local insurance agent, or anyone else that they may do business with. It's not necessarily just shopping, so. But being able to provide a space for those folks would be helpful, as well as even making space for people to be able to live yet too. And I too have received a communication where somebody was saying like that the TSD is a great place to, seems to be an area where they are able to find some housing that's still affordable within State College, but yet still being close to downtown and other establishments that they like to frequent.
Thanks. I agree with what Jeremy and Matt, and you were proposing the 35, not the 40. And for all the reasons that you said too, it seems to be overwhelming what you hear from the investment residents in that section. So, are you saying 35?
With the incentive?
With the 10-foot incentive going up to 45?
Yes.
Okay. And is anyone saying just on West College for that, or they're out the district, Jeremy?
I'd be okay with, I still don't really feel that comfortable with 45. If it had to be, I would, I would say keep it on West College because you had mentioned about the R2, and I've got to looking at some of the R2 zoning districts. Is there even a building that even gets to 30 feet in that zoning district? It looks like what exists there now is relatively just two-story buildings.
Right, yeah, I don't think.
And we're definitely up against a part of town that is going, more going up than it is staying the same or going lower.
Right. And on the western end of the district, it borders R1, so, I don't know if we can bring that zoning map up. So, okay, so I'm hearing, what I'm hearing is 35 feet. I guess I'd look if there's public input at this point, because I know some people were interested in that. I had communications too about this, about 35 feet. That's what I'm hearing. And that's what I was comfortable with, and I thought that that made sense for the neighborhood. I thought it melds in with what's existing there. You know, I appreciate the pointing out that there is R2 on the eastern side of the district, and so I think that would work well over there. Further down Coral, closer to Westerly Parkway, you do have some maybe three-story, maybe, yeah, two, three along Westerly. So, I think that area could support 35. I think that would be okay. You know, if this, what's constructed now at Buckouton College is the high point, and then we're moving down outward, I think that, I'm comfortable with that, so.
I'm comfortable with 35.
And then, what about the incentive? What were thoughts on the incentive?
I was writing down as you were talking, it seemed like everyone except Jeremy was okay with the 10-foot incentive in your initial discussions, but I don't know if minds have changed.
Does the incentive always have to just be a building height?
That's, that was what I was.
Like, are there other things that we can throw out there that will provide a better quality of life for our residents, but also even allow those that want to do business in that district to be able to have a business and thrive, especially the smaller businesses?
Because like I said, the green infrastructure incentives are for increased building area and impervious coverage, so up to, I think you can get up to 90.
90-some percent.
90, yeah, 95% maybe, so.
Yeah, it's pretty high.
It's a pretty high incentive that, you know, if you can compound all of those things. So, if we use something like that for workforce housing incentive, that I'd be in favor of.
I'm sorry, but I don't know if this off the head, is there a proposed maximum FAR for this zoning area?
It's one. We had that discussion last time, and everybody seemed okay leaving it as is.
1.0, right, Brandy?
Yeah, I'm sorry, 1.0, yes, 1.0.
Because that's another area where, in other jurisdictions, that's another incentive, right? It's allowing people to build out on more of the, more of the footprint, right? To have greater FAR, so, but that means a larger building on the same site than you would get, not taller, but bigger in terms of the footprint.
Bigger.
Lot, lot coverage, yeah. So, that's another direction we could go if we want to still allow the builders to build more. It doesn't necessarily have to be higher, we can just allow them to build on more of the lot.
And that, so if we look down to the impervious coverage incentives, and this is under, this is on, in the agenda, on, it's H, page eight of 10, under the zoning ordinance. So, there's, you know, several different items that the developer, the builder could use to get an additional 10% coverage. All lots are allowed 75% up to a maximum of 95. Is that right?
Yes, that's currently what's in your ordinance.
Okay. So, that'd be a pretty significant increase if we allowed, if we exchanged these incentive ideas from the height to the impervious coverage.
Is what the difference, 85?
Yeah, I mean, I'd be okay if we had allowed it the same way, because you're allowed to go up to 95% under the, under this section with the. the, um, uh, under this section with the, with these incentives used. Okay, so do we want to, okay, do we want to explore that a little bit? That's a substantial change, so we'd have to look at new language for that. But I'm hearing consensus on it. That would be, and this would be for West College, right? Is that what I was hearing for, for lots renting West College? Would be, what's the absolute maximum then with the incentive? Thirty-five, right. So, this would be thirty-five plus ninety-five percent, up to ninety-five percent impervious coverage with those incentives applied, however that's arranged. Does that make sense?
I'm, I'm a little bit lost.
So, we're talking about not using height incentive?
For the workforce housing.
Yeah, if that's the incentive that's wanted.
So, you're allowing.
I'm okay with not having incentive for this.
So, you're allowing the building to go out, not up, is what you're saying?
Yes, yeah. But if we're interested in having this kind of incentive, I think there would be other ways to do this, but if, if we want to look at doing this, then I think looking at impervious coverage as an incentive versus height is where I'm hearing some consensus.
I would agree. Of course, knowing that corridor and everything that's already been developed along it.
Um, right. There's not a lot of, um, undeveloped area there. So, I think we're looking at thirty-five feet overall.
With incentives for other things other than height.
Mm-hmm.
So, one of them might be impervious coverage increase, um, increased FAR, floor area ratio, another option. Again, they're both the same kind of result. You'd get a more spread-out, lower building on the lot.
Okay. And then is there public input on this aspect before we move on to the next? Yeah, if you want to come on up to the podium, just give us your name and your township of residence.
Hi, my name's Eric Schmals. I live in Ferguson Township. I, right? So, is this just about the building height comment?
Yeah, well, yeah.
Okay. Uh, one, I, I appreciate the board of listening to community feedback on the heights because, you know, we live pretty close to that new building, and it's not great to look at your backyard and see it. So, I just want to say I am in support of the thirty-five foot height, and I would just say, think about if you're allowing these incentives, how do you enforce those? What are the penalties on that? And what happens if they just ignore any penalty? Like, can they pay their way out of it because it is more affordable to do so than actually following what the township requires? I also would like to say that, you know, this is, it's called a mixed-use corridor, but all these things that we're talking about, uh, it favors developers only. Like, I don't think you should go so hard in one direction if you're including residential areas in this, that, you know, it hurts the residents who have to live in around it, because everyone along that corridor there, I mean, they just have to deal with tall buildings for two blocks, and it stinks. And then I, I'm just gonna put this here so I don't come back up. I don't think you should expand because you're just pushing this further and down. I think you should really keep it, uh, along just the corridor of College Avenue. And also just one note, on the difference between R-two forty feet and thirty-five feet, there's a big difference between forty-foot single-family home, which none of them in that area are. The max you have is three stories, and there's two or three. I don't know if you guys have really walked down that street or anywhere in that area. None of them are very tall. Um, that's a big difference between that and a forty-five, fifty-five-foot tall building that takes up, you know, four or five lots that they've combined together.
Thank you. Thanks so much. Yes, come on up. Just give us your name and township of residence.
Hello, my name is Jen Berkeybile. I live in Ferguson Township. Um, thanks for discussing building heights. I support the thirty-five foot max with no height incentives. Um, I just wanted to add that, um, on Beaver Avenue, it's kind of lower than College Avenue there, and so, um, relative, when you're on Beaver, the buildings look higher, just something I wanted to throw out there. And I also just wanted to say, no one's really building in the adjacent R-two. As you've noted, no one's really building in the adjacent R-two areas. So, um, you know, the building heights there, as we noted, are kind of two stories, three stories. So, something similar in the Terrace Street State District, I think, would be appropriate. So, thank you.
Thanks so much. Any other public comment? And James, you can let me know if anybody online raises their hand. And if we don't see anybody, I think we've got, um, uh, something pretty substantial to look at with that item. And so, we'll move on now to talking about the district boundary. Um, I'll let somebody else kick it off. If, uh, yeah, this is the recommendation coming forward. We had looked at an expanded boundary, um, as well as a reduced boundary. Uh, the expanded included a portion of the golf course area. The reduced eliminated, um, the western end probably at, around Middle Street, um, maybe a little bit further east, somewhere around there.
And the Starks is, it was around that area, yeah.
Right. Right around the MMA, yep. Um, and so, you know, understanding there's, uh, some pretty established businesses along that western end, um, from the waffle shop down to the, um, just before the MMA building. We were looking at possibly removing that. I know, I, we had suggested and talked a little bit about making that portion office commercial, because it's, it's fairly conforming to that, not entirely in uses, because there is a restaurant there. But, um, with the other uses and with, uh, structure, um, you know, with the thirty-five feet, I'm more comfortable leaving the existing boundary, knowing that that use wouldn't be conforming to office commercial, and that's, that restaurant use wouldn't be conforming. So, I'm changing my position a little bit, knowing that we have that, um, that lower height in that area, because that was a real concern. We've got R-one bordering that. We have, um, yeah, a sensitive environmental area in Songbird Sanctuary right there. And so, encouraging really large development and underground, uh, parking facilities had, was concerning down at that end. And so, I wanted to explore, not keeping that included. But, you know, with the thirty-five feet, I'm more comfortable, um, leaving that in. But I want to open it up to others, see where everybody.
I was in favor of leaving it, so.
Okay.
Do I mean that way?
And again, now with the height restriction at thirty-five feet, I would be in favor of leaving it. I would also not be in favor, as we discussed, of expanding it into the Blue Course, uh, golf courses. And I would also be in favor of not including that additional area by Harley or Butts Street, so, in general.
Okay. Jeremy, you want to go ahead?
I think both, both of you have made good comments on that. I think I can concur with that. Um, don't really have anything else to add at this time on that.
Corey, um, thoughts on the boundary?
Uh, I'm good with the recommendation.
All right. Okay. Um, the name of the district, we had, um, uh, mixed-use corridors, the recommendation, and I didn't get a chance to hear the planning commission discussion on that, where they supported that name.
There was no, um, real consensus during that discussion that we had a couple of months ago. So, um, there was, what there did seem to be consensus on was mixed-use and corridor.
Okay.
Because we had, we didn't have this as one of our original options.
Okay.
It was West College mixed-use. They wanted to take West College, most people wanted to take West College out of it.
Oh.
So, it wasn't, so in case you wanted to use it somewhere else, or.
Right.
So, this one wasn't actually part of the original discussion. This was a, came out of the discussion. The most, um, comments that we received, again, were having something that said mixed-use and corridor. So, that's where that came from. Again, I think it's up to, this one really is a personal decision of the township, and, um, you know, you all know best what, um, what it should be named and what the feel is and what you want the feel to be. So, I would look for additional feedback on that.
I mean, it is perfectly descriptive of the area, so I think.
And we did hear a lot of comment during our early public outreach that people liked the mixed-use nature of the corridor. Um, we did hear from, obviously, there's a lot of residential in that area as well, but especially on West College, people seem to like having that mixed-use feel and opportunity for mixed-use, um, development along, especially along West College.
I don't know. Personally, I get hung up on this name. It's just, not, to me, it's just not attractive. It doesn't really, just, I guess it's absolutely descriptive and it's accurate, but what's enticing about that? And again, when I go back.
Zoning's not enticing.
No, it's not, it's not. But we could do better. I mean, it's.
Or Anheuser-Holz or any. Yeah, this one in particular, I'm really looking for some direction.
I mean, I just think of like down in, in, uh, deep, well, like you have, um, Soho, like south of Houston, or Noma, or like north of Massachusetts. And so, there's clever, but unfortunately, what do we have bordering it? It's like Blue Course and, and Buckouton. And it's not really conducive to doing a east or a west of Buckouton or something.
Yeah, I did, I liked the West College in it, but I do appreciate wanting to use this somewhere else. I'm not sure. I mean, I guess maybe in the, what's now the office commercial on North Atherton, maybe eventually would transition to this. That's the only area I could really see using this, right? But who knows? You know, the, I understand wanting to keep it usable for other areas.
More neutral.
Yeah, more neutral, yeah. Um, we had had the word neighborhood in there before at one point.
We did.
I don't have suggestions at this point, so, but I, I get, I, the corridor is the part that I'm not convinced, and I'd, um, look for public input at this point, too, to see if there's some thoughts.
Question?
Yes.
Kevin Abbey, Ferguson Township. Is it implied with this, uh, that notion of district is gone?
There will always be a district. The zoning, um, is made up of districts, so there always will be a district at the end of your name. Um, it will be whatever district.
Because this is pretty reminiscent of Burning Man, because, uh, you saw the weather impact that they had. And so, for me to read the muck district, that's not, I guess I'm with that, on that one. That's not that palatable name.
So, we want to workshop this name a little bit. So, I think I didn't, you know, I think, uh, um, you know, if, we had a, a brief list of name potentials that we could, um, look back at, so I think.
Yeah, I can provide that back to you, the, the initial list. There were like four options. Um, so I can definitely make sure that that gets to Janet and Centris to send back out through, as a refresher.
Yeah, I think there's something in there, and we can figure that out from there. Yeah, I think that's, yes.
The other thing, too, again, I'll reference back to this New York Times article. It's used four times in the article, mixed-use, and it's never really comes across as something that's encouraging or positive. It's always pejorative, you know, the term mixed-use. Again, maybe because zoning's just not, you know.
Zoning is the least exciting part of my job, I'll tell you that. Although, this has been a lot of fun, sweet.
I would welcome the kind of words in it.
Yeah, I think the, I think the point is well-made. You know, we've seen a lot of changes in, um, planning and uses since COVID. And so, I think it is, you know, just here in Ferguson Township and in the borough, we've seen a lot of, uh, different, um, things play out, or things play out differently than we had expected to in some of the construction and lease spaces and things like that. So, I think, um, maybe we're ready to move beyond that, uh, mixed-use name and think of something else. But I do think that there were some elements in those first several suggestions, and we'll be able to quickly, you know, we'll probably bring this back for one more meeting. So, thank you so much, and, uh, and get that out of there. So, um, I think that was the end of my list that I had. If there was, um, other things, and then we'll go to, um, we can go ahead to public comment at this point, and then if there were remaining items, I only had a couple. Um, but I, I want to hear the, um, public input before we wrap up. So, Mr. Kunkel, if you want to come on up?
Well, congratulations on the progress you've made. Um, a couple of questions. Can you define alteration and expansion? What's the difference between those two?
So, the alteration would be more of a smaller, you know, putting on, you know, car floors or something. But expansion, you're more expanding the building itself.
So, can you, do you, have you done any analysis of the average size of the residential structures in the district? So, it's always helpful for me when you have an example. So, if there's a twenty-five-hundred-square-foot residential home in the district, and they're allowed a ten percent expansion, that's two-hundred-and-fifty square feet. So, if they put a deck on, roughly twelve-by-twenty, which is an expansion of the structure, they now fall under the guidelines of the district, which probably will cost them more than the cost of the, the deck. So, I think it's always kind of informative to make sure you have some basis and some real examples of what a ten percent expansion really means in application of the guidelines. Um, secondly, um, you've recommended that there's a twenty-thousand-square-foot maximum size to the structure on a lot. Does that include required parking that might be under the primary use? I think that should be clarified in the ordinance. I don't see the clarification of that panel. So, as you're adding additional underground parking, that, that does not become part of the twenty-thousand-square-foot maximum? That's it? Thank you.
Thanks so much. Okay, other public comment? This is just general, yep, you could come on up and, uh.
Jen Berkeybile, Ferguson Township. Uh, I just wanted to add that even with the thirty-five-foot building height limit, I don't support expansion of the district into that area east of Butts Street and north of Harley Alley. It's just so close to the R-two district. Um, that's a really nice neighborhood to live in, is where I live. Uh, and it's a mix right now of owner-occupied and rentals in the, in the bordering area. In the area where you're proposing to expand to, it's also a mix of owner-occupied and rentals. So, there's, at the moment, three owner-occupied houses there, and maybe four or five that are rentals. I think as far as affordable housing goes, it's probably a more affordable area to rent, and maybe development of a larger housing complex would not be quite as affordable. I also think that, um, you know, the construction hasn't been desirable, the buildings. I've, I've gone to a lot of these meetings. I've heard a lot of input that the taller, larger apartment buildings that are being developed are not what residents want to see there. That's not what I want to see there. And I think whatever the maximum allowance for building height and minimum setbacks is what will be built in a lot of cases, because that will be the most economical for the developer. So, I just, I don't support expanding there, and I know that, you know, people are living there, people want to live there. I think it's a nice area, so, thank you.
Thanks so much. And other public comments? Okay, James, anybody online with their hand raised? And just, I only had a couple of additional things, but I'll go, uh, around first and see if anybody.
and see if anybody else had anything on any element of the SALDO or zoning ordinance that we hadn't talked about yet. No. Okay, not seen anything. Um, I just wanted to ask, um, Brady, I just want to ask you if you could speak a little bit to um, let's see, this was on page nine. So this is the minimum floor area. Uh, residential mixed use developments shall have a minimum density of 10 dwelling units per acre.
Yeah, that's currently in your ordinance. We did not change that.
Okay, so that stays the same. So how, I'd like to bring it up here before I. Okay, so was there a discussion, um, I guess amongst um you and staff about, about that, about changing that or how that's impacting anything?
We talked about this before, I mean, that was actually in the presentation at our last two meetings. And the discussion was to leave at the same, so we did not touch that.
Okay. And then the only other thing I needed to uh just get a little clarification on. And this is uh probably more for Jenna or Christina about with the workforce housing ordinance and the allowance for an additional story. If uh, let's see, if bonus units are um, let's see, developments that provide built workforce housing dwelling units, either built onsite or offsite, are entitled to one additional equivalent unit, bonus unit that, um, okay, so we covered that. Multi-family dwellings that exceed the maximum height may exceed the maximum height set forth in the underlying zoning district by one additional story to accommodate bonus units added to the development for building for sale workforce dwelling units. I just wanted to see how that affects anything we've discussed.
Yeah, so essentially, chapter 27, 716 essentially says, if you are bringing these workforce units online right now, whether that's building in the development you are proposing, whether that's offsite, or you're designating existing units in another building to be the workforce units, you get the same amount of market rate units for each workforce unit. So if we have an ordinance, our workforce ordinance that says, yes, if you do this, we're going to give you market rate, but then we have a separate zoning ordinance where we're capping height, it's not going to be carrots, because they're stuck at a maximum height. So that's why we've included um overall in that 27, 716 to permit the additional height for the bonus market rate units, because they have built workforce units somewhere in the township. They are online. And that was, that's a very big um key for our ordinance. Specifically, I will say of all of our height incentives that have been abused in this zoning district, the Terrace Streetscape, the workforce ordinance is not one of them. It has been other height incentives that have been abused based off a lack of clarity um in definitions and in the text itself that really tied staff's hands. The workforce aspect has not been abused um by any applicants yet. The first building that we see right now going, that's online, they submitted prior to our workforce ordinance being applicable in this zoning district, so they didn't have to provide the workforce units. But essentially, what the workforce housing says, if you build these units, you get another floor of height for your bonus market rate based on the underlying zoning. So Terrace Streetscape, based on tonight's discussion, if we're capping height at 35, they can go to 45 for those bonus market rate units only.
So we, we were talking about capping at 35, but this is still going to allow 45. So we either need to.
I can't.
Oh, can you hear us?
End of the expansion discussion.
Yeah, so, but this would then allow them to both expand and, still expand in height.
Yeah, it sounds like you have some conflict or a potential conflict between your two ordinances. So I would recommend that you take a look at your workforce housing ordinance. If you really want to keep that height at 35, um, and not have another ordinance in the township supersede or or conflict. Because if you get taken to court, if you have conflicting ordinance, then you're probably not going to come out successfully.
Right. Because essentially, they could still get the extra 10 feet right now and we're providing them with this expanded.
If you expand the floor plan.
Yeah.
Or the um impervious coverage, so you're allowing them to double dip.
Mm-hmm, right. So, okay, so we need to also address this uh conflict in the workforce housing ordinance with what we've uh been deciding here tonight. So, okay, so one more element to look at. Very good, okay. Anything else?
Glad you caught that.
Well, I would, I needed to go back and just kind of refresh my memory on the workforce housing ordinance, because it's important and we want to uh make sure we're um not creating more conflict when we're really trying to solve some things here. So, okay, other public comment? Other board comment? I think uh, done a lot of work on this and it's really encouraging how far this has come just with these past few meetings. So again, I just really appreciate our consultant and the time you've given us. You were really generous also at our last joint meeting, staying and letting us kind of work through some things. So I think uh we're very close to having this resolved, so. Did you have anything else?
I would say one thing that came from public comment tonight, and I think even back to our meeting with the Planning Commission, it, I think it would be helpful for everyone if there was more visual representation in, instead of just the text, uh whether, whether that be more photographs or even bringing back the Legos that kind of helped depict what we were reading.
Yeah, very, yeah, it's a good point. It's a great point. Yeah, the sharet in particular was very helpful. A lot of residents came out for that and there were a lot of hands-on uh visual elements that um we could use to uh explore different scenarios, so. Very well done. Okay, if there is nothing else on this item, I think we've got a lot to.
We do, and I just want to acknowledge, of course, thank you, Brandy, for your time. And and so the, if, as the board continues the conversation, it, you know, may be that Brandy is unavailable to join us in the future discussions. Our contract currently, you know, this concludes her presence as part of board discussions. We would have to do a contract amendment to retain her for future conversations at a board meeting. So I would just acknowledge that at this point, uh certainly Legos and, you know, visuals would be absolutely wonderful. And I think do help illustrate, you know, what's being discussed, particularly as we make some of these amendments to what I would say are complex matters, especially for those that aren't living in that particular area and able to visualize what is happening there in the corridor. So it's just something that we can include in our next conversation um in terms of what representation would we like to see with the consultant?
Right.
And uh what the revised timeline looks like to have this to the finish line.
Right, well, thank you for that.
And I'm flexible with whatever your needs are, so just let me know how to. But that, and again, as I said the last time, I really appreciate all the input from elected, appointed, public. Um, this has been one of the more participatory projects that I've done in quite some time. So I do applaud you for your interest and your continued participation, so thank you.
Well, thank you. Thanks for sharing that, too. Really appreciate that.
All right, now I'm going to drive three hours.
Thanks so much. And thanks to the um residents who spoke as well. It's just incredibly helpful and and emailed and um obviously, it impacts our discussion a lot, being able to have that feedback from uh residents in the area. Okay, so we will move on now to new business and the first.
Just get clarification, right?
Yes, absolutely.
In terms of where the board would like to see this conversation. So the, you know, there were some amendments that, you know, were discussed this evening. So the feedback that I have is that what's been presented in the ordinance remains, um, or excuse me, in the document as proposed changes with one exception, uh which would be the uh, the conversation related to maximum building height. So we would remove the 45 with incentive language and replace that with 35 with an incentive for green infrastructure, um 95%, oh, excuse me, 95% impervious coverage.
Yeah.
Uh, for a widened width.
Yes.
So we will integrate that in. I'll also want to just uh share with the board that the entire draft amendment still need to go to legal for feedback and and there may be a need to have that conversation. But uh in terms of the next conversation, staff will carry this forward and go ahead and bring back the amendments. It could be September 19th. It could be the first meeting in October, just depending on workload, because Brandy's time, we've exceeded her, her involvement in terms of contract.
And that's fine. The other thing we need to look at is that conflict with the workforce housing ordinance. So we will have to address that uh along with this, so that we're not creating another inconsistency that is problematic in the future. So we'll want to address that now.
Okay, so we will have that on for a board discussion. We currently are uh planning to tentatively hold a public hearing at the next meeting for the amendment that was discussed at a previous board meeting. So Jenna, do we have that tentatively on for September 19th for the public hearing to amend the workforce housing ordinance?
It has been properly advertised for the September 19th meeting. It's been reviewed by the county and the region will be looking at that Thursday night.
Thank you. So that is to, you know, amend the ordinance to reflect the discussion regarding, the significant change was really the AMI. Um, so that percentage of um, you know, I think we went from 80 to 120 or from, Jenna, if you could remind me of the range from 60 to 120?
We were at 80 to 120 for all units. Now we are um amending them and separating for sale and rental units based on the new uh AMI numbers that HUD has sent out. So for for sale units, we are going 60 to 120. And then for rental units, we're capping it at 80%.
Thank you. So what we will do is we'll bring that back to the board uh to formally take action on that amendment. And as part of that agenda item, the board can then discuss additional amendments that staff can bring back to, to amend the workforce housing for a second time this year, so we don't have the conflict as discussed this evening.
Very good, okay.
So if I'm hearing you correctly, the board, and there's a, there's a recommended motion that you could modify slightly if you'd like. We will go ahead and make the amendments as discussed and bring that back to the board for discussion to authorize advertisement for a public hearing. We could tentatively aim for either September 19th or the first meeting in October for staff to have those amendments back in front of the board for authorization to advertise for a public hearing.
Okay, and then, okay, yeah, if you're ready for a motion on that, and the design guidelines, too, were an element of that, I think.
To add in the definitions?
Yeah, mm-hmm.
But keep the renovations as 50% and expansion 10%. But add in the definitions.
Yes, I have that note as well. Okay, yeah, if you're okay with taking a motion with those, oh, okay. We can do that, huh?
And well, you know, at a staff level, we'll aim to try, like I said, September 19th, September 19th might be quite ambitious, but we certainly can aim to have that back in front of the board no later than the first meeting in October for a review of the changes to the proposed, uh, or excuse me, to the, to the ordinance. And then at that point, we'll authorize for public hearing. So tonight, there's not a need for the board to authorize for public, um, advertisement of public hearing, because we, we're not ready for that just yet. But we can go ahead and receive a motion to make those two changes to the amendments.
Okay, so this uh recommended motion can be modified, then. If someone wants to make that with the modification, eliminating the um public hearing part of it.
And moving, instead of present a draft, but amend the draft ordinance with amendments, is that where we are? Okay, I'll try it.
To amend the, the draft amendments to include definitions uh for the design guidelines and to amend the language in the maximum building height section as discussed by the board this evening.
If I could only read my handwriting. That is a mouthful. So can I?
Would you like me to say it?
Yes.
Okay, so if the board would like to move to uh direct staff to make edits to the proposed draft amendments to the ordinance to include definitions in the design guidelines, as well as amend the maximum building height language as discussed by the board this evening.
This is Patty, so moved.
If somebody would actually want a motion to move that, I'm, I can't motion that for you. I just said it.
Make the motion as, as stated.
As the manager said, yeah.
Yes, I make the motion to the Board of Supervisors, direct staff, as stated by Manager Martin.
Thank you.
Okay.
This is Patty.
Is there a second?
I will second. I could do something, I guess.
All right, any other discussion? Okay, well, great. I wasn't sure we were even at that point, so excellent, okay. All right, all those in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed, say no. Okay, all right. Thanks very much. I think uh.
We're good?
I think we're good on all those proposed changes and again, we'll see it again, so um you can follow up with any other uh comments at that point, so, okay. Anything else on TSD? Not seen anything else. Okay, so we will move on to the consent agenda. Did anyone need to remove anything from that? And if not, is there a motion to approve?
Uh, this is Patty. A motion to approve the consent agenda listed in the agenda.
Is there a second?
I will second that, Mr. Thompson.
Okay, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no. All right, thank you. Okay, next up is a public hearing on a resolution of the township of Ferguson Township. Senator County Pennsylvania authorizing the township manager to execute an agility agreement with the Pennsylvania Department of Transportation. It's be presented by Mr. Modricker.
This is Rhonda. We can't hear you.
Thank you, Rhonda. Okay, do we want to recess, maybe for five minutes? We'll go into a five-minute recess right now while we try to address our technical issues. Thanks very much. Thank you. Are about ready to go back? Okay, what do you think, James? Are we about there?
We're shot.
Okay, all right, we're gonna get ready to restart here in just a second. Okay, I'm gonna call us back to order. Thanks for your patience. Uh, I think our, our connection is spotty, so if, um, it breaks up again, you can, if you're viewing from home, you can feel free to view, uh, on channel seven or via YouTube. And, uh, we'll keep communication with our, um, board member online as we move along here. So we are currently on number two, and this is a, um, public hearing on a resolution of Ferguson Township, Senator County, Pennsylvania authorizing the township manager to execute an agility agreement with the Pennsylvania Department of Transportation. And we'll go to Dave Modricker.
Hello, in the, uh, second meeting in January, can you hear me okay?
Yes, thank you.
At the second meeting in January, the board approved a, uh, agility agreement with PennDOT. Due to circumstances beyond the township's control, that agreement did not get executed at, uh, PennDOT central office. And so, um, the narrative has a little bit more detail, but suffice it to say that tonight, uh, we're asking that the Board of Supervisors authorize the township manager to execute a new agility agreement with PennDOT.
Great, thank you. And this is a public hearing, so I'll open the public hearing for comments on this item. And seeing none, I'll close the public hearing and ask for a motion.
This is Matt L., who make a motion that the Board of Supervisors authorize the township manager to execute a new agility agreement with PennDOT.
This is Patty, I'll second.
Okay, any discussion on this item? And hearing none, this is a roll call vote.
Roll call vote for twenty twenty-three dash twenty-four. Ms. Stevens?
Yes.
Mr. Thompson?
Yes.
Mr. Corey Gracie Griffin?
Yes.
Mr. Heller?
Yes.
Ms. Strickland?
Yes.
Thank you, motion passed.
Great, thank you. Okay, next is a presentation recognizing and honoring the efforts of the Ferguson Township Police Department in attaining re-accreditation from the Pennsylvania Law Enforcement Accreditation Commission. I'll go to Chief Patrick.
Yes, I'm pleased to announce that on July twenty-fifth of this year, the Pennsylvania Law Enforcement Accreditation Commission formally recognized the Ferguson Township Police Department with a certificate of re-accreditation. Uh, in Pennsylvania, only a hundred and sixty police agencies are accredited, have reached this, uh, milestone. And there are one thousand and fifty-seven Act one-twenty that certify, uh, police departments through the Pennsylvania Police Officer Education and Training Commission. So that is a minimal number considering, um, the accreditation program currently has a hundred and twenty-five professional standards and three hundred and seventy subsections of those standards. Uh, an agency must prove that its policies meet the standards, that the training is provided on those policies, and that the policies are followed and, um, properly documented. The process requires continual evaluation of the policies and practices, and the program requires a commitment from the township, which includes the township manager, the chief, and every member of the department. Everyone, um, plays an integral role in this, in this process. Our accreditation manager, I have to acknowledge Sergeant Devin Moran, um, takes a leadership role with this and plays an integral part, uh, in this, uh, program. And I'll have a short presentation here. Um, Ferguson first became accredited, uh, through the process in twenty seventeen, and it's a three-year accreditation process. Once you're accredited, every year you have to show proofs that you're meeting standards, that you're complying with the, uh, processes in place. And in May of this year, we came upon our latest accreditation visit. It's a two-day visit. We had a retired chief, a current police chief, and accreditation manager. Um, and that is selected unbeknownst, uh, to us. And, uh, for two days, they go over our policies. They do a visit of all our, um, our, our property, our, our policies, our equipment. It's a really, it's our, uh, ability to showcase our, uh, department. They conduct ride-alongs, they're able to see the boundaries, get to see the community. So it's a very hands-on process. By no means is it a rubber stamp. Um, they do in fact receive our policies in advance, so that helps speed up the process for them to, uh, look at. Again, a hundred and sixty departments out of, uh, one thousand and fifty-seven, which is really only fifteen percent. Um, and accreditation, as I mentioned, the hundred and twenty-five standards, organization and management are some of the sections, uh, law enforcement function, staff, uh, support, and then, uh, legal, uh, entities. Again, when I look at that.
This is Rhonda, please forgive me, we cannot hear you.
Oh, I'm sorry. Uh, Rhonda, what I was saying is, I hope you heard a highlight is only there are a hundred and sixty accredited police departments in the Commonwealth, and there are currently one thousand and fifty-seven certified police departments. So we are only one of fifteen percent of accredited agencies in the Commonwealth. Okay? Um, and then the next slide.
I, I just want to pause. I don't know that she's hearing. James, I did just receive a message. Corey suggests muting and unmute, mute the room and unmute the room. Rhonda, can you hear us? Sound came back after Rhonda spoke up, is what I was just told, but it sounds like we may have.
Yes, now I can hear you. This is Rhonda, thank you.
Okay, that IT position is posted.
Very good. And, and the last slide is really, um, this whole process brings credibility to the police department. Um, again, I still look at that fifteen percent. Our standards are our use of force, how we handle property, how we, uh, handle a person that we take into custody, that we're going to monitor them, uh, make sure that if they need medical attention, that we're gonna provide that medical attention. There's a duty to intervene if an officer, uh, exceeds, uh, proper force. So there are these checks and balances that the other eighty-five percent of the Commonwealth police departments really don't have to, um, they should, but it, it holds us accountable, though, accountable. We have to show our proofs, we have the onsite visits, and, and it brings credibility to such a professional police, uh, organization. It reduces our agency risk, uh, for exposure to lawsuits, uh, improves law enforcement community relations, that there is a, um, accreditation, no different than in the legal profession, uh, medical profession, accreditation, uh, has its standards. When we take a person into custody, we will cuff them, we will double lock it to make sure that the cuffs don't become tighter. We document all these things, we check the vehicle before and after someone enters it to make sure that it's not contraband. So if you're not an accredited agency, quite honestly, um, you can have your own policy, but it doesn't meet a gold standard or professional standard, um, that the, um, Commonwealth requires. And again, it, it improves our methods of providing services to the community. So again, by no means is this a rubber stamp, it's a grueling process. Um, we had our visit, like I said, in May. The Pennsylvania Law Enforcement Accreditation Commission meets quarterly, so we had to wait until the July meeting where, um, the visit is, um, described, explained with the report, given to the commission, and in fact, uh, they take a, uh, yea or nay vote, and we received unanimous approval. So I'm very proud of the, the team efforts, the support of Manager, uh, Satrie Martin, um, but, um, very, very, uh, proud of this agency. And I'd just like to present, Madam Chair, this is the, uh, certificate that we received from the commission. And we'll probably display that either in the lobby or the police entrance, but, uh, we are in fact, once again, credit.
Excellent.
Yes.
Wonderful.
Any questions? Yes.
I do, uh, so I'm sorry, I might have been tuned out for it, but how long is the accreditation? Like, what is the time period from your last accreditation to this one, or, you know?
It's a three-year accreditation cycle.
Wow.
So now we're accredited, the following day, we are looking for our proofs, making sure that we're proving that we're following the policy, that our training is on that yearly basis, whatever is required, that we're documenting all that. So really, it, it affords, should there be any type of issues, um, we could present documentation on this. So it is a three-year, but it's every day that we're holding our true values.
Other questions?
I just want to say well done. It's, it just goes to show you, everything that we see in the community is reinforced by an agency like this and the accreditation. So to you, your officers, and everybody involved, my hat's off, congratulations.
It is a team effort, yes.
Thank you so much. Thanks for the presentation, for sharing all the information about the accreditation process and really what it means for your department, for our department, for our officers and, uh, for the community. It's, it's a, a really significant achievement, and, um, we, we appreciate you sharing it here and, and taking that under and, uh, and accomplishing all that. So thank you so much.
Appreciate it.
Did you need a motion from us? There was a motion in the agenda.
If you wanted to motion, that you received it, um, but it's not required, but it's an option.
Madam Chair, I would like to move that the Board of Supervisors accept the presentation.
Thank you. Is there a second?
And I will second, this is Matt.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Again, thank you.
Thank you.
And all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no? All right, thank you. Okay, we'll move on to certification of the twenty twenty-four minimum municipal obligation for the police pension fund and the non-uniformed pension fund. And we'll go to the manager for this.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Provided with the agenda is a brief narrative, just providing, uh, information. Uh, and I'll note that this is, this is processed, it's very routine. Annually, the board receives what we refer to as the certification of the, of the upcoming year on the minimum municipal obligation for the police pension fund and the non-uniform pension fund. Uh, the township staff works closely with the township actuary to get these numbers calculated, and it's an estimate. Later in the year, also as part of a routine process, the board will receive a, uh, resolution for, uh, action to be taken to appropriately confirm what the, um, municipal obligation, we call it, the abbreviation is MMO. So when we're using the term MMO, it's the minimum, um, municipal obligation that the township needs to pay for the police pension and the non-uniform pension, or fund, excuse me. And so to, this evening, the board is just asked to, uh, receive the, uh, the MMO for the police and non-pension plans for twenty twenty-four. Act two oh five requires that we provide this to you in advance of the preparation of budget. The municipal cost is estimated to be three hundred and fifteen thousand and three hundred and three dollars for the police-defined benefit pension plan and two hundred and eighty-six thousand and two hundred and sixteen dollars for the non-uniform four, four oh one A defined contribution pension plan. The state aid unit value has not been provided at this time of the discussion, so this is why you're receiving what we're estimating, um, the MMO to be. And it will be confirmed later in the year in the form of a resolution for the board to take action on. I'm happy to answer any questions, but as a formality, this is just something that we bring to the board. The motion is that the board receive the, um, information provided to you this evening.
Thank you. Would someone care to make the motion?
Yes, I, Mr. Thompson moved that the board, uh, received the memorandum in item eleven-four and as stated by the, uh, manager in the agenda packet.
This is Patty, I'll second.
Thanks. Any, uh, questions, discussion on this? Okay, I'm not seeing any, so all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no? Okay, thank you. And next up is appointments of authorities, boards, and commissions, or ABCs. And we'll go back to the manager.
I think you, Madam Chair, provided with the agenda is a brief narrative that just summarizes, uh, and, and recalls that the board authorized for staff to open an application period beginning August first of, or excuse me, I think, um, at a meeting held on August first to authorize an open application period to advertise the vacancies at that time, to solicit applications from residents that were interested in, in serving, uh, on an ABC, authorities, boards, and commission vacancy. Uh, the board interviewed applicants, or I'll refer to individuals as candidates at the work session earlier today that was also advertised and open to the public for attendance this evening. The board is asked to take action to formally appoint the candidates, uh, to the open vacancy slots.
Thanks so much. Um, yes, earlier today, we had the opportunity to speak with a large number of applicants for the positions. It was a pleasure, um, getting to talk to so many people and, and really, um, we all appreciated the number of applicants we got for, uh, the positions available. So it was very encouraging and, um, a really nice time getting to talk with these residents. Um, so we could, if someone's ready to make a motion, we could make, start with a motion, um, or we can have some discussion, we could have a motion and some discussion, so.
I'm prepared to make a motion if we're good with that.
Sure.
Okay, uh, I'll make a motion that the Board of Supervisors move to appoint James Doyle to serve on the Pine Grove Mills Small Area Plan Advisory Committee for a term set to expire on December thirty-first, twenty twenty-three. And that the Board of Supervisors move to appoint Laurel Pearson. Pearson to serve on the Pine Grove Mills Small Area Plan Advisory Committee for a term set to expire on December 31, 2023. And that the Board of Supervisors move to appoint Colin Littlefield to serve on the Pine Grove Mills Small Area Plan Advisory Committee for a term set to expire on December 31, 2025. And that the Board of Supervisors move to appoint Janine Guzmanji to serve as the Ferguson Township Regional Human Relations Representative for a term of five years set to expire December 31, 2027. And that the Board of Supervisors move to appoint Jared Ernico, apologize for any mispronunciation, to serve on the tree commission for a term set to expire on December 31, 2026. And that the Board of Supervisors move to appoint Chanel Simmum to serve on the zoning hearing board for a term set to expire on December 31, 2023. And finally, that the Board of Supervisors move to appoint Jean Fudrow to serve on the tax review board for a term set to expire on December 31, 2023.
Thank you. So that was a motion. Is there a second?
This is Patty. I'll second.
Okay. And then was there any discussion? I'll let you start since you made the.
I just made an observation here on the third appointee to the Pine Grove Mills Small Area Plan Advisory Committee, Colin Littlefield, that it says it's set to expire December 31, 2025. I wasn't quite sure because I thought our terms were one year.
I think that was just the very initial year.
Okay.
That we set them from one year and then they probably move to a four-year cycle, maybe.
Kind of stagger them.
Yeah, and they're staggered too. So it was just that initial year.
Is it four years or three years? So the 2025, I believe, is your actual vacancy. So it would be maybe two or three years. Yeah, I would have to check to confirm.
And hopefully Colin will be all right with that extended term.
I just, you know, I actually wanted to go back to the human relations one. I myself was sort of in favor of our other candidate. Yeah, I just, I felt like her experience, her, her current situation is, is somebody that I was more supportive of. Anyway, that's, that was just in favor of Shannon. I don't know about anybody else, but.
They're both excellent. Just to say again, we had just a number of folks come forward with, you know, great interest and would bring a lot to any of these groups. So I think this was one we were particularly torn on earlier. So I'd like to, Corey and Jeremy.
Anything else to add? You know, I do concur. This was a very competitive candidate pool, very diverse, well-qualified and, yeah.
And I'll just say one thing that we discussed, because this was just earlier today that we held the interviews. One thing that was discussed was that the other applicant holds a seat on the county human relations commission. I think, I'm not sure of the exact title of it. And so we were just saying that if one, the other was appointed, that hopefully the two could collaboratively maybe come and present to the board on the goings-on of both of those commissions. And so we could be update, updated and encourage a working partnership there, you know, having both of these bodies represented by these great candidates. So that was one thought, but again, yeah.
Great, great. Understood.
Yeah, when, when it comes to the terms of human relations, you know, both, both these candidates are going to serve an integral role in their own separate spheres within the region. But at the same time, I, there are opportunities for them to be in partnership and to collaborate. And so I think it's a win for everyone. And it also expands our, our community representation.
All right.
And not to understate the, you know, the difficulty of the choice. Obviously, you can see, we were very torn even in our discussions earlier about where we were going to land on this. There was no, no clear cut path there. So.
Right, right.
Okay.
But if we're comfortable, I mean, we can.
No, they were both, right, they were both brought a lot to the table. And I just, yeah, I was leaning more towards one, but I'm, I'm fine with, I'm fine with Janine.
Yeah, understood. Okay, if there is no other discussion, cut a motion.
I, I would also add, while there are going to be candidates from today that we interviewed that didn't get appointed to any of our authority sports and commissions, we invite the public to continue to engage in our community and to even apply for future and upcoming vacancies as we will have some end of the year vacancies that will need to look to fill going into 2024 and beyond. So just want to thank all the residents for your participation. Continue to encourage that participation ongoing.
Thanks. And to that point, there are a number of terms that end at the end of every year. And so this application process will open back up toward the end of the year so that we can appoint and reappoint people in January to those seats. And for those interested in applying, please sit in on these meetings. Come to the Pine Grove Mills Small Area Plan, Planning Commission, you know, sit in, attend, get to know what, what they do. And Zoom options are available, I think, for all of these meetings. So to just, you know, take a look and see what might spark your interest and get you engaged. So again, it was a great turnout today and we just really, really appreciated that. So we have a motion and you seconded, I believe, or Patty, I'm not sure. Yes, we had a second.
Yeah, you seconded it, I think. Yeah.
I don't. I think we're still waiting for a second.
I think Patty seconded.
Oh, I did second it. I did. Right, I did.
Yeah, you start, okay, yeah.
That's right.
We just need the vote.
Yep.
Great. All right. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no? All right. Corey, can you hear us? I just want to record your vote.
Yes, I can hear you. I'm afraid that my sound is messing everything up in there. So I'm kind of being passive, but yes.
Thank you.
Yeah, I just happened to get, the sound just went out after I talked, so.
I apologize. We're.
Oh, it's back.
Okay. I apologize for that. Yes, I think that he said yes.
Yes.
Okay. So we'll carry on. Okay. Okay, so moving on. Up next is request for consideration of a waiver. And we'll go to Christina.
Well, James, is that ready? Let's go through the narrative. On August 23, 2023, Pantera Engineering have their client requested a waiver from chapter 224011A2C, which is existing features, natural features for the replot of tax parcels 241717 and 241718. This is a minor subdivision that proposes adjusting lot lines to convey 4.948 acres from tax parcel 241717 to 241718. Properties are located at 917 for Drive and the second parcel is at the terminus of Breezewood Drive. Properties are zoned, single-family residential R1 and there's an extra line in line. The applicant is requesting a waiver from having to show all the trees six inches or larger on the subdivision plan. Both lots are very heavily wooded and it would be very timely to, and costly, to show all the trees on a minor subdivision. The applicant submitted some photos that changes. They're included in your packet for your reference. The planning commission and staff have reviewed the request and recognize that section 224011A2 is challenging and costly. The small subdivision is recommending approval.
So we have the pictures in our agenda. So if we're comfortable moving forward, and they're available to anyone with access to the agenda. So if we're comfortable moving forward, we can take a motion.
I'm Mr. Thompson. Move that we grant the application for waiver listed in item 116 of the agenda packet.
This is Patty. I'll second.
Okay, any other discussion or questions? Okay, seeing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed, say no?
Okay, all right, thank you. And we'll move to request for consideration of a waiver. Back to Ms. Bassett.
Thank you. On August 23, 2023, Pantera Engineering, on behalf of their client, requested a waiver from chapter 22512 sidewalks for the replot of tax parcel 241717 and 241718. This minor subdivision plan is proposing a lot adjustment to convey 4.948 acres from 241717 to 241718. These lots are in an established neighborhood with no existing sidewalks on either side of the street. For Drive is a private street and thus potential for connection to future sidewalks is unlikely. The planning commission and staff have reviewed the application and is recommending approval of the waiver to, to, to section 22512 sidewalks.
Okay, someone care to make the motion? Again, there are photos.
This is Patty. I move that the Board of Supervisors grant the waiver from 22512 sidewalks with no conditions.
And this is Matt. I'll second.
Okay, any other discussion on this item? Okay, if none, all those in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed, say no? All right, thank you. Okay, moving to replot of tax parcels 24017-017 and 24-017-018, minor subdivision plan. Back to Ms. Bassett.
One last time. Pantera Engineering submitted on behalf of their client a replot of tax parcels 241717 and 241718, minor subdivision plan dated August 1, 2023. This plan proposes a replot of tax parcel 241717 to 1.435 acres and tax parcel 241718 to 7.07 acres. Tax parcel 2417 is located at 917 for Drive and tax parcel 241718 has access to the terminus of Breezewood Drive, with no addressable structures on the lot currently. Parcels are located in the single-family R1 zoning and those used on both lots are single-family residential. Planning commission and staff have reviewed the minor subdivision plan and are recommending approval with conditions to the Board of Supervisors, subject to the conditions described in the community plan or memo dated August 18, 2023.
Okay, would someone care to make a motion?
I have a question.
Is it, will it, I mean, if it'll affect the motion?
I do, yeah, just a question. The decimal places was changed when it gets to number eight here. Six and seven had the same information, but this one has a couple extra, well, you know, factors there. I wasn't sure why that was different. Looking at, we'll look at six and seven. They were referenced 6.383 acres as compared to 2.122 acres. And then on number eight, it refers to 6.38 acres. So there's missing the three and only 2.11 acres, not 2.122.
So you just got locked off the, so this is typo.
Okay, so I was just wondering how binding then this was or if we wanted to, if we needed to change that before it gets approved.
We'll verify the accuracy on the plan.
So the numbers are correct on the plan, just the text within.
The narrative.
The narrative.
That we're about to approve may reflect that.
You will have copies of the plan in your agenda packet.
And the motions on the memorandum, is that correct? Oh, yeah, in the way.
Yes, approving the replot of the identified parcels.
Okay. So it's the August 18th, and I'll go with referencing.
The memo outlines that you outstanding minor condition.
I'm okay with that.
Yeah, I'm, I'm good. And if you're on the record saying, hey, this is, so.
Right. I think as long as it's consistent in the plans, I'm just trying to pull up the memos. Let's see. 2.12, 2.11.
There's a missing decimal place.
If we go off of, right, six and seven as opposed to number eight.
But it's not as substantial, so not what I would consider as substantial. It's, it's not necessarily wrong. It's just not the highest level of accuracy in its description, which could pose, it certainly could pose concern. So we can, what we can do is certainly be clear in the motion to, you know, we can include in the minutes clarification as to what that is referencing.
So clarification as to lot size?
Right. And I'm looking here for the motion to see if Jenna, the director of planning and zoning, provided that detail in her recommended motion.
It didn't just set the lot numbers.
Yeah, the detail isn't in the motion, but it just references the memo that has the 2.11, I guess instead of the 2.122.
Right. So your, your motion would be, would be appropriate.
Yeah.
It'd be fine.
Yeah. You could say with noted, right.
Agree with Chair Strickland?
Yes.
Okay.
With noted correction to acreage.
Yep, that sounds good. So I'll make a motion that we move that the Board of Supervisors approve the replot of tax parcels 24-017-017 and 24-017-018, minor subdivision plan subject to the conditions described in the community plan or memorandum dated August 18, 2023 with clarifications to the lot sizes.
I'm Mr. Thompson. Will second that motion.
This was like my Jeremy moment where, you know, I found the whole misspelled word.
That was good. Okay, any other discussion on this? Okay, if not, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no? And we could go back and record Supervisor Gracie Griffin's vote on that if you weren't able to hear that. I think, Corey, I think you dropped off for a minute.
I did, sorry. Yes.
Okay, any votes, any vote in favor of that last item?
Correct.
Thanks very much. Okay. Thank you, Christina. Okay, and moving on, we are at 2024 Annual Budget for Spring Creek Watershed Commission. We'll go back to the manager for this.
Thank you. Provided with the agenda is a brief narrative summarizing and introducing what Mr. Kevin Abbey.
Thank you, provided like the agenda is a brief narrative summarizing and introducing what Mr. Kevin Abbey here, who is the Township's representative for the Spring Creek Watershed Commission, but also really taking a leadership role in trying to really revitalize the commission and and advance forward some projects with the budget and bringing a plan to the municipalities and engaging with staff at the various participating municipalities within the commission. And tonight he joins us for a review of the projects and a budget with a discussion, or for an opportunity to discuss with the board. Mr. Kevin Abbey, would you like to discuss a little bit about the projects? Thank you.
Thank you. Kevin Abbey with the Township, Ferguson Township, I'm a resident at the West End and am the Board of Supervisors appointee to the Spring Creek Watershed Commission as an alternate. The elected official is Supervisor Gracie Griffin and I come before you as we are working with all 12 members of the Watershed Commission to present the 2024 annual budget that's in your packet and I tend to talk more than I should, so I would look to you for questions or I'm more than happy to clarify things. Working with centuries, I provided a profile that gives a background on the commission that started back, what, 26 years ago in the county for a decade and then at the end of that time, just a little over a decade, 12 municipalities within the Spring Creek Watershed came together under the Intergovernmental Agreement Act and created the commission that is here today. And so as the manager said, we're trying to abide by the terms of the charter language from the Articles of Agreement that was established back in 2016, or excuse me, 2007, not 2016, my bad, and provide background to all of the elected officials that change, as you know. Certainly Ferguson is a good example of that in recent timeframe, but keeping people aware of what has been done, the commission at 12 members is the largest such commission in Center County. And it includes all the way from the borough of Milesburg at the very end of Spring Creek where it merges with Bald Eagle Creek, all the way up to the upper ends of the watershed that include Ferguson and Half Moon College. Only about half of the municipalities actually have Spring Creek mainstem running through them, but as I mentioned, you're probably very familiar with township business on things like Snap Cabin Run and then in Half Moon Buffalo Run, certainly Logan Branch, any of you that are trout fishermen or have family, friends that are anglers have heard all of the stories of good spots for angling in Spring Creek. So we've come forward with a very modest budget. This is, has been a citizen run by appointees and elected official organization and we're hoping in 2024 to secure an AmeriCorps position. It is significant in that members of the commission have been working closely with municipal authorities, both water and sewer, as well as township engineers and staff to collaborate and find projects that we can work on collectively and one of the beautiful things that the Watershed Commission can do is work across jurisdictional lines and that is being explored by township engineers and it was brought to the commission in the spring that we should consider trying to be more active with all of the members and that resulted at the July meeting that I reported on earlier that the budget was passed and is built on an increase from a 10 cent per capita contribution from municipalities to a 15, so it came from the commission and was approved unanimously that we asked for a nickel to do more in working with staff and member municipalities. And please, if there's questions, don't hesitate, this has been a joy for me to work on and I'm happy to serve the township and want you to know that the dollars being used are stewed correctly and that were financially sound. As it was on like an elected treasurer.
Great.
So.
All right, well, thank you so much, I'll go over to the manager, does anything you want to add before we?
I will just share that I have, I've met with Kevin Abbey and our stormwater engineer has been participating in some of the meetings and the discussion that, you know, where we can have increased collaboration. I think that the work that Mr. Abbey's done to really get all of the municipalities on board across, you know, the watershed has been, you know, quite the accomplishment, it's my understanding since it's been established in the 90s that we haven't, you know, we haven't been able to have that level of collaboration that we have today and so while there is a request to the township for an increase of up to, you know, 50% contribution, that, you know, I would just ask the board to to consider this initiative to be aligned with some of the goals that have already been established in much of our policy. And that, you know, an increase of 50%, we currently pay a contribution of approximately 1,900 and this would increase to about 2,900 and so, you know, this comes with a recommendation that we support this, understanding that it would be, it would be at least, you know, a few years before we would see additional requests for an increase, understanding that this just would, you know, really allow them to to level set and start advancing forward and achieving projects that, you know, Mr. Abbey's really set forth for the for the commission, so. We haven't seen this level of activity in in a couple of years, so this is really refreshing and an opportunity to give that level of support and it has my, my support and recommendation.
Thank you. Thanks so much for the presentation, thanks for your work on this, all the time you've devoted to this and your efforts, obviously it's, you know, really having an impact and
Labor of love.
That's great, I mean, it's it's what it takes and this is a really important group and it has so much potential and so I think, you know, for the entire region, you know, across the county and I think, you know, just very specifically looking at the township and some of the MS4 requirements we have and I think it really will work hand in hand in the future, you know, those things are often across municipalities and we need to coordinate and have, to have a body like this that's already working along those lines, I think is really going to benefit the township in the future. So I'd be in favor of this, you know, I know we won't see this until we look at the budget later, but just, there's a discussion to give the manager an idea of where we're all going, so.
And we're asking for review and comment, the way that the commission is set up following the member municipalities' comments, we will go back and then look at what we pegged the contribution at and send you an invoice then later that we're trying to get ahead of the game so that all of the managers and staff can incorporate this item into your budget considerations, so that would come back to you in the next few months. Or several weeks, I should say.
Okay, great, and I'll open it up to hear everybody else's thoughts, so.
I do it before increasing it, I appreciate it, it's only a nickel as opposed to 50%. I was like, I like, I like the nickel comparison, so, no, well done, thank you.
I know, I agree with everything that's been said, absolutely, and thank you.
Yeah, thank you, I I was looking at the numbers earlier and it's like, oh, those are some big numbers, but when it all comes down to it, it's only 15 cents per resident every year and what you add value to the community through your work for 15 cents.
Yeah.
Don't think that's anything to complain about.
And Corey, do you have a comment on this?
Uh, no, I I'm in favor of the increase, I think it will allow the commission to move forward with the projects that will benefit our residents.
Yep, thank you, okay, and do you want a motion on this or?
Yes, I, let me pull up, I just stacked everything up, if the board would like to go ahead and make a motion that you're in support of the contribution as discussed this evening, then we will, staff will go ahead and update the 2024 operating budget draft as it is in process and development, so.
Okay, thank you.
All right, this is Patty, I move that the Board of Supervisors support the budget as discussed tonight.
And this is Matt, I'll second.
Okay, and just to, you know, the manager said how this really does align with a lot of items in our goals that we've set forward and so just to kind of reiterate that and we'll discuss it again at the budget time, so. Thanks for bringing this now, it's nice to be able to work out some of these things ahead of time too, so it's not everything all at once, so this is beneficial as well. Okay, so we have a motion and a second, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed, say no? Okay, thank you. Okay, next up, we have communications to the board and I had communications regarding the TSD that I shared earlier and I'll, we'll start this way. Any communications?
I have communications regarding the TSD rewrite in the Pine Grove Mills Small Area Plan Advisory Committee.
I do have those communications, both of those.
And I did have communications regarding the ABC applications as well, thanks for reminding me. Anything else?
Actually, I hate to say this, I did forget one, this was an in-person communication with residents of Pine Grove Mills during the accidents that occurred here on Saturday at the intersection pertaining to speeding vehicles as well as just reckless driving that they've seen going through Pine Grove Mills.
Okay. All right, okay, anything else on communications, not seeing anything, we have a large number of items under calendar items and these can also be found on the website for times and locations of all these meetings and if there's nothing else from the manager, I'll take a motion to adjourn.
This is Patty, so moved.
And I'll second and we're adjourned, thank you, everyone.
Yay.